Yes, it is. Okay. Let's call the regular planning commission meeting to order for December, please.
Blowski.
Here.
Over.
Chris.
Marsh.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
He plays absence. Roberts is absence. Hardy. Hill, Addison.
Bill.
Here.
My head.
Pardon me. Hubbard, Addison.
Okay, we do have a forum.
Stu Blowski.
Oh, yes.
Charlotte. We're reading here. McIntyre, Addison, and now Mabbres.
Okay. Thank you. You have a forum. First on the agenda, actually, minutes from the November 7th meeting. Can you somebody move the minutes? Support and move those. Support toward any changes, additions, corrections? All in favor of approval as opposed to say aye? Post? None? Great. Next up, approval of the agenda. Can we have someone with the agenda, please? All right, you can tell. Or export Mars. Any changes to the agenda? None? All favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. Okay. Public affairs, we have none tonight. Pre- grand citizen participation, we also have none.
Can I say no sent to you this morning?
Oh, yes. Okay. Really, right? What's about to come? We're into what's lost, which is crazy. Report. Special tonight. Let's see. So from planning commissioners, anything planning commissioners to share? Many reports or anything? No. And so, um. So, and our council rep is out. So we will go to, um. Sorry, excuse me. Community development report, Michelle?
So, okay. So, um, at the, I'm sorry. Megan has provided us, and I included in my report, some updates from legislation that happened this fall. One is inclusion of qualified residential treatment program as a residential use, and it amends the zoning enabling act. Excuse me. And then the second one is the increased capacity in a family childcare home or group home. That was something signed into law in June of this year, and it allows for, um, one additional? One to two additional, um, children in that home. The city council passed, and I've got links to all of it for you, so. There will be some tweaks to the zoning amendments update in order to be consistent with those laws. City council adopted a new law in infectious weed ordinance. Currently, it's in what's under public nuisance. We moved it into vegetation in the general code, and there'll be two notices placed in the local paper. One in March, the other in July. Excuse me. Letting folks know what the requirements are. If the ordinance officer finds that a home has infectious weeds or overgrown lawn more than eight inches, they'll get one notice. And if nothing gets done within the sudden business days that they're allowed, the city will go in and move the grass.
Is that about me and my prayer? Is it my backyard?
No, the prayers are exempt. They are specifically exempt.
Okay. Somebody said weeds, but.
Yeah.
He's not here, but.
That raises a question. It is. Prayer. Who's definition of a prayer? You know, I, the people who let go lawn grow lawn and say, I don't know if you understand, it's a prairie.
No, that's not a prairie.
Well, my point is.
Yeah, but it's a good question.
So, a lawn, as in grass that you put in your front yard, not ornamental.
True.
Not, you can't have a prairie in your front yard. You can have a rainforest.
Well, you can have a prairie in your front yard.
Yeah. Now, we don't have a provision that allows a lawn to be a complete prairie. In prairie, in the sense of the ordinance, think of, think of, um, think of the vacant lot where the fire hall is going to go. That's more open prairie, only the buffer gets cut.
Okay. We've had a law, a well-known law, and here on farm for many years that fought the association for 20 years now about insisting that they're doing it right, and everybody else has a problem.
Tom, I've never talked about this before. I immediately go.
So, um, I will be interested to see how, uh, how this one affects that because nobody likes it in, uh, and, and we're just about, the association hasn't taken any action lately, but they're going through probably.
Yeah.
The, the zoning code, um, well, I think I know what you're talking about. Um, we've made sure that regarding infectious weeds. But the homeowners association may have a more stringent code than the, than the cities as it pertains to manicure law and etc. So, um, they don't like it, they need to figure out how they're gonna.
Yeah, well, we would prefer the, the city deal with it rather us, but if, if it doesn't affect it, then you will have to consider that.
Interesting.
Um, we've got a new business. By new businesses, ID rehabilitation. Um, there's a new martial arts studio. Both of those going into Dexter Crossing. Edward Jones, that was in Dexter Crossing, moved across the street into the Dexter Bushes Plaza area. Soaring Crane Designs and Renew, Renew Hope Counseling both moved into the Blue Water Building. Uh, quarter presented in Dexter, not the world. And then we're still trying to set up dates to meet with the Ann Arbor Area Foundation. They're looking for ideas on the recent money that they have allocated for investment communities. That's where we're at. I can answer any questions. Otherwise, the director is mentioning, who just love the colored piece of paper. One of our little real estate offices recently went into the Dexter Conners building in downtown. And they had what looked like a phone, an iPhone with the screen, but the screen had moving, um, pictures. And the ordinance doesn't allow that, at least not yet. So they modified it, and what they're, and what they've done is they've got more like, looks like a webpage with a keyboard. If, what they're trying to do is do interactive, and I get what they're trying to do. It's really like an informational chaos, but the ordinance doesn't allow it because it's, it really is like signage. So I bring it up to you tonight to find out if this is something that you think we need to be regulating? Or are we just going to say, no, it's a sign, we're not allowing it? Why did I know you were pertaining?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, have you spoken to the council at all about whether council believes under our current ordinance is it is a sign?
Um, I don't know, because I determined that it was a sign. But, um, and it's got a moving screen, moving pictures. And there's nothing in the ordinance that allows for a display in a business where they have a moving picture.
I'm not questioning you, trying to be disrespectful or anything, but I would be interested to hear your own analysis of why you believe you're on solid ground saying it's a sign.
Um, you can't see it in the, the information they provided, but if you're in front of it, they're logo and everything is on it.
What building is it?
The Conners building. But I will think that kind of that question of is, does the attorney consider it?
Yeah, I'm not questioning it. It's just so unusual.
It.
But for the record, I'm completely opposed to it. We shouldn't allow it. However, we need to stop it, we should stop.
Yes, you can't say I'm.
So I would say maybe this is a, um, one might be addressed, maybe a specific definition of signage. Um, so the, the ordinance does really need to, uh, talk about it specifically, but maybe in the definitions, we need to say either define something new as interactive signage and, and have a section about that, or we need to say interactive signage, computers or interactive signage or whatever, is, uh, um, window, whatever, however we call it, media is a sign. And just say that, if, if that we want to do, but I get Jim's point personally is that, you know, without a specific definition, and this is just a new thing. This happens when there's a new thing.
Right. And that's part of what I wanted to, to get your feet back on.
So I think it's worth, like, I think Tom and Jim said it, said that, I, I, I think it's worth clearer, like, defining it in, like, personally, I don't support it. I will not. I, I think it's a horrible idea, but, but, but I think that it should probably be clarified in the ordinance so that, right? You can say, point to something, it says here, no digital or no virtual signs. Or, right, because if you're on solid enough ground and saying now it's a sign, and say, say no sign. Also, again, like, if they may, just because I know Ann Arbor and how signs, well, obviously, we live in Dexter, but they play little games, like, right, just a keyboard, no logo, and then it's just, you know, display. So how do you get that?
So one of the, go ahead.
So I think it's interesting. I think it's similar to an ATM. We do allow ATMs in certain locations.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I'm not thrilled that they use the city of Dexter, Michigan logo. This is walking to Dexter, Michigan, so that's kind of concerning. It seems like it's a kind of an official, my official website.
At first.
So maybe it doesn't belong in their front window, but if they had a foyer that you came into like a ATM, they could go on a window inside of that as long as it wasn't street facing. But I, where it's at now probably isn't appropriate.
Yes, I, I would also say that this is something, we're, we're voicing our opinions on the fly here, and this is maybe something we should have a separate discussion, which is, is, uh, digital signage or multi-mix media signage in general, what do we think about it?
And how we. As much as I hate to discuss signage again, but this is like, we just said it, but yeah, something new. So, yeah, we should probably address it one way or another.
That's fine. I'll just put it as a discussion item for your, one of your next agendas, um, and we'll go from there. But I appreciate the.
Yeah, great. Thank you for bringing that up. So. Okay, anything else? Reiterate more?
Nope. Did, I hope you've all been fine along with the 3045 Broad Street project. The most recent information is in your. Moving on.
Yep. It is. It's like, I mean, I don't want to get, um, okay, so let's see. We have a community citizens wishing to address the commission, seeing down here, and I don't think any ants, right? Okay. So, uh, whole business. The, uh, oh, Megan, it's your time.
Oh, man. That's on its soul.
He's time to shine.
It's been a veteran effect. I just looked at the public comp.
Yes, that's true.
It's okay. On Friday, Ben Carl described me as having unique skills. Hmm, so.
Ah, that's bad.
I've got a conversation with them.
I, I think it's because I enjoy community engagement. Nobody else in the room really does as much as I do. Speaking of which, based on your comments last night, and thank you very much for those, um, we came back with two different processes. One is to basically with the community engagement, um, treat it like a board game. Um, we did this in Northville during the height of the pandemic. They were amending their master plan, and many of you've been to Northville, you're familiar with Northville Downs, which, um, is going to be sold, has been sold, and is going to be redeveloped. And so, um, what we did was we created, um, a base map for that and playing pieces and made rules, um, which limited the conversation and dealt with the constraints on the site, but also the constraints under which the community that they need to operate. Um, and so, um, based on our conversation, um, and discussions with Michelle, felt like that might be a better approach because it limits the conversation, um, it sets out expectations, and then also, um, you then have results that directly contribute to, um, looking to creating a plan. And so, if you participate, you really see how they contributed goes to the final plan and what was decided, what's not. It's, um, so I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, but that was really the main change in between two. A lot of the steps would remain the same. Um, and, um, we had price estimates of both types, um, throughout the steps that were in the memo that went to you. So be happy to answer any questions, um, take any feedback, um.
Feedback? I don't understand.
Okay.
When you say game board and pieces and limits? Well, that. I don't, I don't see how it works.
So literally what you do is in the public engagement, people sit at a table, and we would make something that would be the size of a game board. And what it is, is the base map of the, of the Second Street subarea that we're looking at. And we would say, okay, you have playing pieces, so you'd have to decide, you know, what goes along, you know, where, what type of uses go where, what type of housing can go where.
Those are the playing pieces?
Those are the playing pieces, and you have to put them down. And so, one of the things you were talking about was that it can't be all housing. So for uses, when the house is, one of, one of the things would be that you would have to use at least two to three types of land uses. And they'd have a kit that you put down.
You have small groups doing that, or?
Yeah, small groups, or people could do individuals. We'd give people kits and they could come back. Um, when we did it in Northville, again, it was during COVID. So what we did is we had a PowerPoint that, um, somebody moved pieces onto, and they listened to people who were in a webinar and, um, and moved them over, and that's how those were designed. Um, and a lot of times people would ask for things that maybe we didn't have a playing piece for, and you would just take notes. So, uh, and then what we would do is we would design the game board, and we would bring it here to you as a planning commission, and you guys would play it before we put it out to the public. Um, I don't like to do anything like this without a test run. And so then you, and, and that way, almost the public acts as designers. You get their feedback and what their priorities are. You're going to have specific things. There's going to be things, specific things that come in from, um, the master plan, things from council, things from the engineers also, um, and so then you can, and it's just a form of, of public engagement.
How, you kind of, but how does all of that meld it into, I mean, I'm different than everybody else here.
Right. So then what we do is we present all the different ones to you, and we would have a composite as well. Um, what usually comes out is there's like one that 80% of the people agree on, one that things that you sell unique features that people to add, and then there, there's one that's completely unboxed. And all three of them are worthwhile for the planning commission to consider, um, going forward in the plan.
I know who's going to do it and put that in the box.
So, um, was that helpful?
Yeah. So you're saying this is just a way to structure the, for.
It's a way to structure the conversation, yeah.
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 It makes sense. We kind of talked about that, you know, giving pieces that can be moved around and.
Yeah, it's, so I've done something similar to this in engagement exercise now. We did one for West Stadium a long time ago, but it, it, I think, I like it because it is, it's kind of, it's very visual, and it, it helps people. Because most people really, but they're just care about the land uses, you know, like, most of the people in there, they're not, so it kind of gets to that. But it does, it's still open enough for discussion, I think, like, it does limit discussion, but I think it kind of limits it more to the bit, like, to really what we care about, I think, a little bit more. So I think, and again, we're not talking about a huge area here. It's just like, I mean, we, like, I can't believe you did just that for that, for Northville Downs. I mean, that's a huge, that's a, like, big complicated site downtown. I mean, that seems like you could have weeks of stuff. Uh, but either way, I think for this one, it's more than adequate. Yeah, you probably hustle too. Yeah, I mean, that's a huge site. But anyway, so I think for Third Street, I think this is a good idea because it's pretty visual. Like you said, you can, if one's got an aerial photo as a basis, and then maybe a big map that kind of has a zoning, and you can look. So anyway, I, I think it's a pretty good idea. It limits discussion, but I think it really gets, we don't need a ton here because we're not, like, reinventing this completely, so. Um, anyway, so I, I like that also. But. Yes, Jim?
Well, you answered my main question, which was how are we going to limit the craving game wherever a piece of single family housing is.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think it's, I think it's, um, I, I think it's going to be much better and much more productive than it's to map to events, so thank you for adjusting on the fly.
No problem.
The, um, the scale of this one, it seems to me, does let itself a little bit more of a, I do think that the numbers that you put down here sort of the shret thing. Or. Exactly, not, more than, a three-day shret for this reason, I don't think that. Two day, I don't even need that. In other words, they think you're comparing, they end up comparing numbers. Dollar amount, then, obviously, let's not do the shret. There's too many complications. It's too damn extensive, so let's forget that. But I will say, just like, uh, just like you said, the, um, this one seems like it couldn't fit the game board idea pretty well, and might be very, very out.
Well, I'm happy to try if you're happy to try.
Yep.
Any street cross section with that too?
Well, like, street cross section.
Right away versus like, popping.
You know, we're going to do this whole stretch, right? Right now it's drag strip. So how are we going to call him? He starts now, as it goes on to this.
So you know what I mean? Like, when you do an area plan, you get.
The process you're going to go through is not necessarily something that the public input's going to be in, because.
Yeah. If you look at the draft plan, there's a conceptual cross section for Second Street, so that would have those. And if it would change at different points on Second Street, then there would be.
A draft.
A draft plan.
Yeah.
Page. So, um, yeah, draft, draft, subarea plan with drafting regulation, drafting, grab regulation plan for former's quarter, comma, land uses and building types for the quarter, comma, conceptual cross session, section for Second Street, comma, integration of plans for the First Street park and the Subarea plan.
Any other feedback from Megan on this?
I'm sorry?
Uh, any other feedback from Megan on this? Like, it sounds good. I don't, you know, you know, vote on this.
Yes. We need a recommendation from City Council.
Okay. All right. So, um, we will need a, is there any other question or chat, yes?
Yeah, I do. A little bit. We're going to vote on this. Are we voting for everything in time?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, actually.
Yeah. And we're also voting on the total dollar amount of this thing that we're recommending.
Yeah, that's actually a good question.
Let me step back. If you are prepared tonight with what you see from the Department of Division of Council, you would do that and include an amount that would exceed for the option that you would prefer. If you want Megan to come back with a formal looking proposal with a complete breakdown and detailed scale scope of work, et cetera, with the cost, we can come back at the next meeting and get where to do that.
Um, I, I don't know myself, it is a formal proposal, but we're talking about a fair chunk of change here. Uh, $20,000, um, looks like something like that.
Twenty, if they, we made the zoning amendment optional, um, and maybe it crosses over to different fiscal years. Um, that was the reason for that. Um, so, but with the option of zoning ordinance amendment, that, that would be $2,700. A lot of it is, quite frankly, procedural, um, because there's, because it's an amendment to the master plan and, uh, amendment to the zoning ordinance. There's a number of meetings that happen to happen for state law.
So, yes, Tom?
Megan, I appreciate you putting this together. I really think the game board idea is pretty interesting and innovative, quite frankly, to get public participation. I'm not supportive of spending the money to do either one of these studies. Uh, I don't think we're going to find out anything, maybe that we, or I, that live in kind of that community are going to know. I think what Kyle, you know, Kyle talking about the road cross section, that's really interesting to me too, but that goes beyond land use, which is what the catalyst that I guess for this. So, I'm not certain we need to spend the money, although we've asked you to do this a couple of times for me personally. I don't think I'm going to get any answers, but I already don't, can't predict.
Okay, that's good. Um, so, and I guess what, so I do have a question, Michelle, because typically we, like, we haven't in the past, I think we ever assumed voted on these contracts to.
To recommend to council?
But for the dollar, but I didn't think we always had a fixed dollar amount on there. Am I wrong in that? Like, I, because, I, I mean, I guess Chad has a good, like, I don't remember voting, and maybe we have, again, like, I just don't pay attention to the numbers as much. So that's very, like, with a fixed dollar amount, like, how we saw, we just, okay.
With the master plan, you did that.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We did.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was just trying to think, because again, like, I didn't analyze the numbers as much, and I think it's clear here, we won't get support. I mean, we can take a roll call vote, I think, but I don't know what that necessarily means if this doesn't pass. I mean, council, I guess council can still authorize the study, right? Because we're just making a recommendation.
Right. The planning machine does want to do this, so it's probably not really difficult.
That's true. So the only thing that I might suggest, if any of the members here think that, since we are missing, what, three members, if that would make a put Megan off again, but I think that might make a difference if we have three more members, maybe.
You mean, you might be able to overcome the vote tonight?
Well, well, yes and no. Not necessarily overcomeable, but give, give council a little bit of a better, because we're only at the minimum.
You're at the correct, you're.
Minimum. So to give, honestly, give council a little bit better of a, a feedback on that. So, but, but you're right, Jim, again, at the end of the day, council can do whatever. So, um, what do, what do members here think about that? Again, just pushing it, one more meeting to see what the other members say. I mean, I know Tom, I, I understand it won't change Tom, push the covers, okay, which is fine, great, but I don't know if it makes a difference. Tom?
I agree with that. I think that's, that's a wise course. It, it doesn't hurt. First of all, it's not urgent. Secondly, um, having more planning commissioners, why, and if you're, it's not a bad thing for
any other team. I don't support you. Okay, yeah, but no, but thank you. So then, again, it's important.
I, I agree with, with Tom here as well. Um, I, myself, I'd be very uncomfortable suggesting something that costs this amount of money. I would rule, not really, I would rule, but never less. I, I would think that as a planning commission, we could shret by ourselves and come up with a plan, a, a very good plan. In fact, the plan, um, independent of, of this. Then take that to the public.
I have no doubt we could as well. And for the record, I do think we should delay it. They'll hold all the definitely don't agree on this.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I do think everyone should get a chance to weigh it. But Chad, I would say the argument, yeah, I agree that you could, but the reason, I think, to do it the other way is to get the public. So that way, when they come to yell at us, we're not making it all simple, but we're at least listening to something. You're right.
Yes, Tom?
Um, I mean, I, I am. I'm in favor. I'm in favor of this, but I do think it's kind of a big thing, and it wouldn't be a bad idea to have commission here. Okay, I'm in favor of any.
So with that, I guess, um. I think it's funny, like, as soon as it would like.
Just somebody made a motion.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's what I was saying. So, okay, so support. Okay, support him. Yes, uh, Marsh, support that. So, I'll, I guess we need a roll call for that.
Hill.
Yeah.
Phillips?
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Blowski?
Yes. Thank you, Megan. We do appreciate all your work on this.
Dylan, this is, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll see you after Christmas. Um. All right, so, um, new calendar. Discussion of the 2023 meeting calendar.
Um, I thought that we'd use a planning commission pilot.
Just two items on the agenda. I guess, fine, you keep us out of here. Um, okay. Why don't we do the pilot first?
Okay, okay. So at your, at your last meeting, we started to review all these, and one of the things that, um, And one of the things that, um, um, the planning commission wanted some additional input on. Was, uh, the conflict of interest, well, let me step back. The reason you wanted it is council member wanted to know or want expected or expects. Consistency between the city's conflict of interest ordinance and the planning commission bylaws. And so, um, um. What staff is able to find is that, um, section fifteen, sub nine of the MZEA. Does state that the legislative body may remove number blah, 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 blah. But it's the last sentence, um, failure of, uh, unless the legislative body by ordinance. Defines conflict of interest for the purpose of this subsection, planning commission shall do so in its bylaws. City council does have ordinance that addresses what conflict of interest is for all boards, commissions, as well as city council and staff. So, um, with that ordinance in place, what, um, uh, what we've done is. Take out, take out the, um, take out conflicting language, merged it so that. The language is, you just go right to the, the city's ordinance. Um, uh, and it's, it, it literally does exactly what I said it. It defines it, you have to avoid it, um, and then it, you know, for the purpose of the section. A conflict of interest is defined, cite the section, there's no sense of regurgitating it all here. Because if the ordinance changes, I don't have to change this. So, what are the prohibitive actions? They're there, treatment of conflicts of interest and disclosure statutes. It's in the ordinance, and then the treatments of conflict of interest that are violated. And so a lot of language got taken out because we've just cited the other, um. What were the other things? There is, um, there is clear clarity and some detail put into the membership section as it pertains to ex officio. Um, what they can vote on, um, what position they can hold, they don't get paid. Um, and then we separated that section where, um, an appointed member shall not be employed by the city. And then the portion regarding the member of the zoning ward of appeals. And again, clarified what can be voted on, um, um, based on the state law. So, I'm comfortable with what's in here, I know it's legal.
Yep.
It's up to you to decide if you like it or not.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Of the bylaws as amended, product as being? And if not, I think we can move to amend the bylaws.
If you're ready.
If somebody wants to make a motion to amend the bylaws. Also have discussion after.
I moved to amend the bylaws.
For, alright, um. So any other, move Cardy, support Phillips, uh, any other discussion on the bylaws? Maybe, see none, um, can we have a vote, please?
Cardy?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yeah.
Covert?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yeah.
Philosophy?
Yes. Okay, thank you, thanks for that. Alright, now we're moving on to new business, uh, discussion of the twenty twenty-three meeting calendar. Um, I think, the only thing I saw that I think that you already kind of flagged was the July third. Yeah, I think we should probably move that, because, I mean, I can, July fourth on a Tuesday, I think no one's gonna be here on Monday.
So, um, um. The council's meetings and such have been cited, they'll be doing that at their next meeting. Um, uh, but I wanted to get this in front of you. If I remember right, there were questions earlier this year when. When the July meeting was coming up. Excuse me, um. You can schedule a meeting, you can decide now whether you want to hold one for July. We don't know what will be, you know, what pressing matters will come in front of you, so, um. You could actually leave it the way it is for right now, and as we get closer and you know what's on your agenda. And you know what other meetings are going to be, um, scheduled, decide then, it's completely up to you.
Yeah, um. I mean, I guess, I don't know, I hate to kind of leave on there in a way, if we know we're not gonna honor it. But I think we should at least have something on the schedule for July as a planning commission meeting, but you don't know when the council meetings are, you said yet.
Council, well, council will be the Monday, which means it'll be the tenth. So, you would have to make your meeting, um, you can make your meeting July fifth, which is a Wednesday. July sixth, which is a Thursday, I don't think you would do it on Friday. Or the following meeting, Tuesday or Wednesday, I just don't know.
Right.
Um, where, um, Art's Hope Network. Park and Rec will be in, um, or if there are any other meetings in the evening.
Obviously, I see, you know, if we hold it the week of July, we're gonna lose a lot of people.
Right, so I was gonna say, what about the next Tuesday to put, so that would be what, the eleventh?
When July, I love it, it's great.
July, I love, just being sarcastic. Alright, alright then. So I don't know, it's, well, I mean, I think we, if we put it tentatively, I know we can always kind of amend it, but I think we should at least have something on the agenda. Um, does that look, I don't think there's any religious holidays in July at that time that I can think of, but.
I was looking to see if I got on the calendar when Park and Rec meetings.
They need the.
They need the third Tuesday, so you could, I think you could make your, your July twenty-third, the second Tuesday of July. So in other words, the eleventh.
Yeah, I was just thinking, my other work, yeah, okay, so, um. Yeah, so the, um, is that okay with, I guess for now, as far as we know, I mean, July off, so, okay, so I guess.
And you don't need to make a vote or anything, and that's fine, because you don't set your calendar.
Okay.
But I'll let Justin know.
Okay, yep.
He'll inform council accordingly, so that when they do adopt the schedule at their next meeting, it at least has your input.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, proposed business for next agenda? Wow, that seems weird, January.
January, right.
Wow, January, January. Um, so, well, well, again, I assume we're already prepared to, the, uh, proposal we just postponed, so we'll have that to discuss at least, so. Um, that'll be interesting, and then whatever else, I guess, do you know of anything else I can add?
Um, I would like, I would like to ask the planning commission a question. When you adapt your master plan, we did so with the study of Second Street corridor. So I'm interested to know why the opposition to doing this study?
Well, I can speak to myself on it. Because I think we just resowned and we had the opportunity to look at that at that point, and we chose not to. And it's, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of money for, to me, a completely discretionary choice that we don't have to make. It's zone, it's fine, I, I don't, I. It, it just seems like opening up can worms, particularly where the populace is at at this current moment. It's like looking for a bite at this moment.
So you're not saying no forever for the Second Street study just now?
I, speaking for myself, I don't know if I ever want to spend that much money on the Second Street study. I'm in that camp.
I'm sorry?
I'm in that camp, that's a lot of money, and it seems like, no, we should do that, I think we should do it. But there ought to be a way to accomplish a study without spending that amount of money.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't care about the money, I think the village is, or the city has plenty of money.
That's our.
Yeah, I, I, we're not sure about money for studies, but I, I think it's an issue of, it, it just isn't. We don't have a compelling reason to do it, because there was a meeting and some, some residents voiced a concern. I don't think it's a, a reason enough to, uh, to kick off a study like this. I think we need to have a really compelling reason to do it. And, and I don't mind that idea of having a, a shrapnel with a planning commission, and I don't think people show up and yell at us, I don't think that's a, a problem. But, uh, I think that, that's as good of an answer, I mean, in terms of, uh. If we have a curiosity on what the planning commission thinks of this area, I think we can do it. I think it's all basically overkill for, for the issue. And I, in terms of resources, again, we have a lot, yes. But it's hard to change it, but it's like.
Just agree with that. I just still think there's something to be said for deciding whether something's worth something. I don't really feel like it's worth it.
And I, yeah, uh, I just, I, I'm somewhere in between all of you guys. I like Chad's idea that if there's something we can bootstrap ourselves here that would get us partially down this road. I do think that the, the cost is kind of a lot, I guess in the grand scheme of Dexter government spending is low. But what was the whole zoning cost?
Well, the whole zoning cost was, um, was a metric C fifteen thousand.
It was half of that, it's going to rock.
It reminds me of when I was a firm lawyer, and we joked internally that, like, we're showing up to your meeting, you kind of asked me to stop. That's, that's the kind of law firm I, that's the kind of law firm I worked for.
It's an involved process, it, it definitely is, and I understand.
Yeah. Man, I, yeah, so to finish that thought, oh, we, there's, they put the sidewalk in. I think there was some talk of repaving all of Second Street at some point, and pulled back the sidewalk because of this.
It, it was a water main, it was a water main replacement, um, the sidewalk was added. Um, the reconstruction of the road and repaving the road. Is in the future, because we needed to have the money for that, but it was the water main that prompted.
So something to think about when we, if, and when we do look at this, is that. Okay, we're gonna spend how much money to repave this road, it's gonna cost? A lot, right? Two hundred, a block or something? So, what would it take for that street to support the cost of that road as far as? You see what I'm saying? It's not gonna be two houses to pay, uh, to cover that road for the life of them. That's the way to think about it. So, if the city is ultimately going to be solvent, um, yeah, there's math there that exists.
Michelle, I'll, I'll, I'll agree to do it when my partner moves.
Remember, this is a college meeting.
Yes, Tom, did you have something?
Remember, I don't care.
I, I wasn't, um, necessarily on the board or the commission when the master plan went through, but. It, it's hard for me to say it was a missed opportunity to do it as a part of that process, but. Um, it would have been good to be part of that process, and I think, I think if you open up a zoning map and look at the zoning along the street. You can easily identify why we're doing this about one, it would appear, one property, to me. And I don't think it's worth going through that effort, I'd rather wait and spend the effort on when we update the master plan again. Um, to, to look at that and see if there continues to be the need to do so. Um, I think I'm a big supporter of that street need the stop sign on it. So however I can help try to get a stop sign on that, I've seen, uh.
Midblock?
Midblock, I'm gonna suggest Edison and Second Street. Because there are issues with speeders and, uh, neighbors that aren't happy about it, so. Uh, I'd, I'd like to see that, but I just don't think we need to study the land use. We're not gonna get anything new necessarily.
Yeah, my voice on, uh, uh, speeding thing is, uh, as somebody who's been on the board, if you're at Park for a long time. We go through cycles of, uh, people worrying about speeding, and, and it gets, it, the discussion gets extremely exaggerated. Whereas normally it's something we saw, Ace Eater that alarmed them one time, I'm not saying this lightly, Tom, but. Um, and, and they think that we need speed bumps every eighty, all the way through the place. And we have people that live two houses away from the turning circle who complain about speeding, so I, I don't know how, how that works, but. The, the whole speeding thing and the response to it, I think has to be done very carefully, because it screws up a lot of people's daily communities this time around.
Well, we won't solve that issue, so.
I'm gonna go with Tom on that.
That's true, yeah, yes, Jim.
So, you guys mostly know, like, I own rental on Second Street, and so I'm on that street, I'm attuned to that street a lot. I also run from my house down Second to the park. And I've told my wife, if I can kill by cars on Second Street, like, it's almost the only, only street in town that I'm afraid to run on. And now the sidewalks, and I run on sidewalk, and, and people, they're moving, they're moving on Second Street, yeah.
It, it doesn't, it's been studied, it doesn't need the warrants for the stop sign. Um, but the, but council and staff are very attuned to that. That speeding is going on, it's an enforcement issue, and we are in the, um, the beginning stages of negotiating the contract with the sheriff. And enforcement everywhere in the city is, is a major concern. Um, and it's being expressed. Very strongly, um, I think that, uh, they kind of, I don't need to interrupt you. Um, it was noticed in one of the most recent reports that there were a hundred and one, I think was the number, um, traffic stops. And five tickets issued. So. It begged the question, and it was asked the council, is, that seems like a big dis, big discrepancy. Why aren't they being, what, how can we, we know that there's more enforcement needs to be done. It's not that we want to be ticket heavy, but it is the deterrent to the behavior, so.
No, how far away? But I've got a solution, oh, I'm sorry. I'm stepping on toes here.
No, no, I don't, you may say what, oh, okay.
You've always got extra police cars stopping, just parked down there.
Yeah.
If they park that long side of the road, Dexter, and our world, just park it there, rather than down there, all by itself, instead of that slow traffic down. Same thing on Second, I'm sure there might be a police car there that was visible. If you want.
Is there not, yes?
Anyway, getting on a tangent.
So I agree there is an enforcement issue, because it's clearly people fleeing. Okay, there's, uh, something that I've learned as going through this zoning code is. How important street cross section and street design and stop sign cadence is for determining people's speeding. And the fact is, is that those people done up Second Street don't live in Dexter. They don't pay taxes in the village, they live way out here, they cut up Second Street, they whip around that corner and go straight up towards them. So, A, if these people are, uh, a little bit, uh, slowed down coming through town, I'm happy about it. They're not, they're not, they're out there, and they got a lot of roads to go fast down out there. This is a place, Dexter is a place where people live, where cars drive.
Okay, can you get what you needed?
Yep.
One more, okay, Dave?
Yes, could you explain why we can't put a stop sign there, like, even, I understand it doesn't meet the criteria, but don't we have some discretion with that?
So, uh, communities do that all the time, that, even if something doesn't need a warrant, sometimes they will still go ahead and. Place, um, a traffic control, uh, device, I mean, a sign, um. It's, go ahead.
I'm gonna go on Wacker and say we just need the sheriff's department to sign the declaration of their refuse stop sign. If it doesn't meet the warrant, my understanding is that's all that has to happen. I'm, everybody can hear it, I'll volunteer to install the sign.
I'll come, I'll bring some paint.
I, I invite you to come visit here on Park, we have every traffic control measure known to man, and people still complain about, oh, the speed to cars. Well, no, they're not, that, not by Park, they're not, and people still complain about. Well, Tom, not, not by the park, they're not, and people still complain about, so, the, the complaints are not an indication of, of hazard necessarily, unless you have data to back it up, and-
We're still visiting it.
So, we're still zero casualties from traffic, right?
Oh, yeah.
I always like to go by a car and watch that big guy.
I got there to cover as a kid in a while.
Alright, Michelle, one last.
My comment is, I think you should, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, making that?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Alright, so support for that.
For it.
Alright, support Phillips, all Pink Road Germans, say aye.
Aye.
Now, seeing as a juror, thank you all.